Welcome to Woodstock City Council. It is Thursday, March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. This meeting is being held electronically in accordance with section two thirty-eight subsection three point three of the municipal act. And section sixteen point six point two four of the City of Woodstock procedural bylaw. This meeting is being livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel. And a recording of the meeting will also be posted on the city website following the meeting. An agenda of the meeting can be found on the Agenda Meetings and Minutes page of the city website. Councillors will be raising their hands in view of the webcam when moving a motion, requesting to speak, and when a vote is being taken. If a member of council is disconnected or having technical difficulties, we will take a recess in order to attempt to rectify the issue. If technical difficulties exist that prevent the meeting from continuing, the meeting will be adjourned and reconvened at a later time. If a councillor needs to leave the meeting at any time, they are requested to inform the clerk. And with that, I would ask all the councillors to turn on their webcams. Welcome, everybody. And any disclosure of conflict of interest? Councillor Accioni?
No, thank you, your worship. I declared a conflict of interest in the closed session meeting with respect to agenda item four one, proposed acquisition of land.
Thank you. Any further disclosures of conflict of interest? Seeing none, disclosure of new business. Matters arising from the minutes. Then we'll go to the minutes from our regular meeting held March fourth, two thousand and twenty-one. We'll go councillor Accioni?
Um, move by myself, seconded by councillor Lauder, that the minutes of the regular meeting of Woodstock City Council held on March fourth, two thousand and twenty-one be adopted.
Thank you. Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries. And we did have an addition to the agenda. It looks like they have not joined us, so we'll dispense with that addition for delegation. Uh, so that'll move us right along to delegations. We have Astrid Claus, uh, planning consultant regarding our application at Parkinson Road. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Mister Mayor, members of council, I did provide a presentation at the public meeting earlier this week. And I just wanted to be available in case council had any questions of me. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions of council? Seeing none, uh, we may have some when we get to that item under eight B. But thank you very much, and no resolutions required on that, as we'll deal with that when we get to the planning items. So the first one we have is the implementation of the provincial direction regarding additional residential units. Uh, councillor Talbot?
Sorry, wrong most. I'll move that Woodstock City Council receive the report regarding the implementation of provincial direction regarding additional residential units as information. And further that the planning department be directed to prepare a report to identify the neighborhood characteristics as to where an additional residential unit shall be permitted. To propose the establishment of a density threshold and other requirements to ensure that an additional residential unit will appropriately fit into the neighborhood.
Thank you. And seconded by councillor Accioni, discussion? Councillor Lauder?
I I have some concerns, and I wondered if the director of planning, uh, Mister Hafiz is um with us?
Yes, I am, Mister, your worship.
Um, some of the issues that I have thought about is parking spots and and um when there's a garage, a lot of people don't, I know that's supposed to be a parking spot, but lots of people uh don't use their garage, and then there's the parking outside, and so I think that that shouldn't be included in it as a as one parking spot and make sure that the tenants aren't parking on the street. Another concern is the the fifty percent green space. We have that now, and I would love to see that remain uh, rather than have it that as parking spots. And the other, um, when I was reading through it, the door entrance locations uh, must be visible, especially for emergency services such as the fire and and the police and um uh, any anything to do with emergency services. And um, the other thing is concerning the citywide implementation. So my one question is, would it be um advisable for the for us to request that the city um prepare an interim bylaw to come back on the April first meeting, a control by law? So that um, this is kind of a put on hold and that we don't get a a lot of um applications coming in during the time from the from now until the time it's implemented. If that could, if that should be added to our motion.
Uh, your worship, with that question is directed to me, I I certainly, uh, to the points made by the councillor, tho- those are all matters that, uh, in terms of the zoning provisions that you've spoken of here would be part of the, uh, certainly the overall consultation we expect to do with the public and stakeholders and whatnot. And uh, what this report is intended to do is provide you with the uh, the overview that we've undertaken, the the kind of the, we've gone out and talked to any number of different municipalities that have undertaken these exercises previously. Uh, and but certainly, you know, we are obligated to, and we fully expect to do a full consultation uh, with the city of Woodstock, with residents, with stakeholders, with city staff, with everybody, uh, to come to some conclusions. So what's in this report is a largely a, you know, an overview that basically, there's been broad implementation of this uh, in in most places. But that's not to say that there's not, and we've given you examples of some of the things that uh, that uh, from the zoning perspective in particular, that have been utilized in different municipalities, but certainly it's not to say that those are the only solutions. And uh, this will be part of the review, the overall review before we make any particular recommendations to you about that. Use of an interim, I, we actually talked a bit about this, and recall, we talked about this back in November, we first approached you with this this issue uh, to get direction to kind of proceed to to review it. And uh, an interim control bylaw is uh, you know, it is a tool, that's at your, that's at your disposal, and if you're intending to to apply, uh, you know, restrictions in certain areas, I would suggest that it's something that you you can certainly initiate. I think what we said the last time around, though, is that what uh, what an interim control bylaw does in a circumstance like this, and this is, you know, perhaps my opinion. But uh, you know, the province has been very clear, and I think we've said so in this report, and and we keep harping about the province on this, and we don't typically get too excited about provincial direction, because we we believe we have our own ability to to interpret provincial direction and and implement, but uh uh, you know, what the PPS and what the planning says from uh, from our perspective, but this is one where the province has been very clear and and consistently iterated their position, to the extent we even had a minister's letter at one point about the additional residential units, the implementation of, is it's not the only tool for affordable housing, but certainly one that they are relying on to go a long way to help with uh, what they perceive as the problems, the provinces uh affordable housing issues. So to implement an interim control bylaw is really flagging this issue. I I I appreciate that we're getting applications and that as long as we get applications under the current the uh, the current policies and provisions that uh, you know, that that creates a, you know, we've had a lot, a number of those application that creates a problem, but it's not to say that even if you amend these policies and provisions, that you're not going to get, particularly if you're trying to be restrictive, that it's going to be difficult to, you can't stop people from making applications, I guess, is my my kind of over overall point. And I I would just caution about the use of interim control bylaw. If that's council's direction, we'll certainly prepare one and bring it forward for your consideration. I would just caution that it it would cause, I I would say, create a flag for the province when reviewing your policies and provisions uh, for zoning that uh, may bring you scrutiny that you may not otherwise be be subject to. So uh be happy to answer any further questions about that.
Okay, that that answers my question on that, and the and the other concerns will will be uh, taken into consideration when uh, in in due time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Accioni?
Thank you, your worship. Just more of a a general statement, um, really. Uh, there's a huge need, there's no question. I know everybody um, has concerns, we all do, with our properties and everything else. Um, I think the province has made it really clear what their intentions are, and I'm just scared if we go and try to throw a whole bunch of uh municipal rules, bylaws, that as as you mentioned there, that we cause a big flag, and we're going to just cause extra cost to ourselves trying to fight these uh, at the tribunals and everything. So I think we just got to be cautious and uh and realize that the need is there, and hopefully with a lot more housing will bring down costs and make things more affordable for people and it would be interested to see how we can kind of control it without worrying about being overturned, is all my concerns are. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Tate?
Yeah, just a comment through your worship. I'm going to support this motion. Um, a lot of work has gone into this from all the councillors. I know councillor Lauder and I have had many discussions. Um we need this. I think sometimes when you look at provincial policy, it's directed more at cities like Toronto, and they forget that we're not Toronto. And we have to have some control of what goes on in our own city and in our neighborhoods, and we need to um, have consideration of all the people that have bought property and that are paying property taxes in the city of Woodstock.
Thank you. Councillor Schadenberg?
Yeah, thanks. I guess my general question might even, my general statement might evolve into a question as well. I came up with a sort of a long list of what I thought would be sort of minimum requirements, so I'll certainly be forwarding that list to our senior planner, Gort Huff. And it might look like a fairly strict list, but as the councillor Tate just sort of suggested, this is the city of Woodstock, this isn't Toronto, or even London for that matter. I know London's gone through this planning process already. In fact, I received a report from somebody who who's works in the in the planning field, that sort of suggested that in London, that would be citywide for London, not just near Fanshawe, not just near Western. And of course, we're, we do have a post-secondary education, and we do have people that need sort of uh, modest, small accommodation, not even bachelor apartments, if you want to call it for back, lack of a better term, um, as a as a necessity. But I just cer- certainly believe that, uh, I guess maybe my question to to Gort Huff would be, uh, since this More Homes More Choice Act was received Royal Assent back on June sixth, two thousand and nineteen, it it seems rather unfortunate that we're looking at this now in early two thousand and twenty-one. Was there always some sort of a a plan for the official plan to be amended in in Oxford County to set up sort of these new guidelines and 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 rules? Because of the fact that we've now got a minimum of three, um, outpat tribunal cases coming up involving the city of Woodstock?
Uh, through you, your worship, to that question, uh, it has been, and we actually are doing this, uh, this exercise is not, we're actually focused on the city of Woodstock right now. But uh, what we learn here will help us uh, go with the with these similar amendments across the county. Uh, going back to two thousand and nineteen, and even a little bit before that, the the province had actually already implemented second unit uh provisions uh, previously to to Bill one oh eight, Bill one oh eight actually expanded it to a to actually uh require the authorization of these units and not just the house, but also the accessory structure. And our perspective, when we looked at the original legislation and even the updated legislations, that you already have policies in place right now that uh, speak to these sorts of things, that that speak to backyard infill development. So carriage houses, for example, are already something that are policies in in certain circumstances. They're all subject to zoning amendments. But uh, you have policies in your official plan for low-density residential areas that support a broad range of of uh, of housing types, not just single detached dwellings, but semi-detached dwellings, duplexes, uh, even three-unit, four-unit, multiple-unit uh, structures that are already captured in your policy. So it wasn't at the time, uh, we weren't getting the the flood of applications that we've certainly seen over the last, uh, you know, six to eight months. And uh, so that's, you know, the reason it wasn't picked up on immediately is because we felt we already had pretty, pretty solid policies in that respect as it was. Clearly, with the number of applications you're getting, and council's perspective on those applications, that uh, has triggered us to to move forward with the the new legislation and to make sure that uh we bring forward something to you sooner than later, that uh, that brings it to a, hopefully a satisfying conclusion for you. Thank you.
I guess just one more statement, then I'll, then I'll not not say anything else. I think the city of Woodstock, just more just a statement, even before the time I was on council, needs to be congratulated for the intensification and and brownfield redevelopments and everything that have already been done to sort of take old schools and old factories and turn them into apartment buildings. So I think everyone should be congratulated on this council now and the previous councils to have to have done, uh, the amount of work we have done in in the quote-unquote intensification, as the province of Ontario defines it.
Councillor Talbot?
Uh, thank you, your worship. Um, I can, I I agree with every lot of things that have been said, and I agree with Gort about the interim bylaw, because right now, if we were to do an interim bylaw, that wouldn't help us with the five cases that are before the LPAT. But um, I think that we, and I I know that it's a a double-edged sword, but I've been, I guess, fighting provincial pop provincial planning policy for a long, long time, because in my opinion, uh, the policies are more to make life in Toronto easier and developable. You're looking at a a higher intensity of population and where um um, they have um, high density almost everywhere. It's not like when you're coming to Woodstock, where we have, you know, our planned subdivisions, single family dwellings. We have our high density, we have our medium density. Toronto's pretty much all high density, and and I I understand what the province is trying to do. But even by having these extra units in people's homes, not guaranteeing that it's going to be affordable and that those people are going to have access to it. But that's no guarantee. I mean, for a lot of people putting these units in, it's an extra way of income. And who's not saying that they're not going to be charging the same price as a brand-new apartment? Um, I don't want to come to the front of the province and have them look at us really strictly, but um going forward, I think as a community, we need to tell the province that what works in Toronto doesn't necessarily work in Woodstock or Oxford County. Or for that matter, London Middlesex or um, Chatham Kent. Um, and we shouldn't, we shouldn't all be painted with the same brush. In a conversation that I had earlier today, I I truly believe that Toronto needs its own planning policies. And then the rest of the province be dealt differently, so that we can add the the policies that they bring forth more reflect our needs and wants as communities that aren't such high density um, and with the greater populations. It may come to where we will fall into those categories. But right now, all these decisions are adversely affecting our community if we have to follow um, these policy statements. So I think by, um, that that's why I came, um, had the motion um, um, done up the way that I did. I I really think that we need to hear our community. We have a lot of people paying a lot of taxes, high taxes. And I mean, I think the last thing they want in their neighborhood is possibly another unit. And, you know, we have to have the ability to control that and to protect them as much as protecting those who want to have these units in it. So um, I think we really um, need to um, look at this very seriously, and councillor Schadenberg had some great ideas. Um, you know, and some of his recommendations, but um, I think we have to worry about Woodstock. And try to fall into the guidelines or send the message back that what they're asking for doesn't necessarily work here. And like I said, that that could go either way, it could have an adverse effect, but I I think it's something that we need to have done for a long, long time, is telling the province, these policies you're coming up with don't work for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Councillor Schadenberg?
I just want to say for anyone that's kind of viewing this, that we are specifically, not specifically, but in general terms, talking about the R one zoning area, that's where the, we have the outpat uh uh, decisions coming, uh, that we're going to. People who wanted to break up and down duplexes in the R one zoning, that's really what the what the case is, that we want to really predict, certainly a lot of areas in Woodstock, where where either um R two or R three or or medium densities is already approved, it's it's the neighborhood, and it's it's preserving the neighborhoods as they as they currently stand in these these certain areas that you want to sort of take a a quiet spot, and we're not going to name any streets, but all of a sudden allow everyone to to build up and down duplexes and all those uh, cute little bungalows. Well, I don't think, I don't think that's what we're looking for here.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries. Uh, next item on the agenda, we have the application for official plan amendment zone change for uh, one thousand fifty-five Parkinson Road. Councillor Schadenberg?
Yeah, thanks a lot. The Woodstock City Council advised the county that the city supports the application to amend the official plan. File number OP twenty dash twenty dash eight submitted by Devindra Greewall, Harvard Rinder Singh and Kuldup Singh for lands legally described as parts lot seven and nine, Plan four ninety-one. And the city of Woodstock to amend the special business park policy area adjacent to the brick pond wetlands to include a small-scale truck terminal with parking for up to sixteen transport trucks as permitted use on said lands. And further, the Woodstock City Council approve in principle the zone change application file number Zeta and eight dash twenty dash twenty submitted by Devindra Greewall, her Harvard Rinder Singh and Kuldup Singh for lands legally described as part slot seven and nine, Plan four ninety-one, and the city of Woodstock to rezone the lands from restricted industrial zone M two to special restricted industrial zone M two dash S P to add a small-scale truck terminal with parking for up to sixteen transport trucks to the list of permitted uses on said lands. And further, that any comments received from this uh, public were reviewed and considered before the decision was made in relation to this planning a matter.
Thank you. And uh we have Miss Hasler with us. Welcome. Oh, and uh, councillor Tate? Was the seconder?
The seconding, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So this application today is for an official plan amendment as well as a zone change, and the applicant is proposing to establish a small-scale truck terminal on the subject property. And as uh, I believe it was councillor Schadenberg indicated, it's located at ten fifty-five Parkinson Road. Uh, for council's information, the property is a total of ten acres. And the applicant is intending to develop the southern portion of the subject property. And so that would be the portion that would be rezoned to an M two special, which would permit the truck terminal. As for the the lands located in the north, as you can see in the aerial, whoops, there we are, as we can see in the aerial imagery, you can see that uh this is an area that's um, that's a natural area, and it contains a wetland as well as associated vegetation that acts as a buffer for the wetland, and it's part of the larger um, brick wetlands area. And so the applicant is proposing to rezone those lands um, from an M three zone to an environmental protection zone, which is uh, sorry, the zone would be O S one. And uh, currently, the lands, those lands where the vegetation exists are designated environmental protection. However, the zoning has never really caught up with the designation. And so in this case, the applicant would be correcting that and would be implementing those uh, the environmental protection policies. As we discussed briefly on Monday night, this area was uh did have a significant amount of tree cover. The applicant did remove uh, approximately hundred and twenty trees uh, back in October, two thousand and nineteen. The Parks Department did go out and ask them to stop, and they did stop. Since then, along with the environmental consultant that they hired, they've replaced the trees at a ratio of five to one. And um, they've provided a tree compensation plan, as well as they undertook an environmental impact study. Then, as we discussed on Monday night as well, there's the city park staff as well as upper town staff will be going out at some point this spring to check the uh, the tree plantings, and then through site plan, the site plan approval process will be establishing a tree maintenance program with the with the owner. I believe councillor Talbot asked about that. That's something that we would address through site plan. And then it would be addressed through the site plan agreement, and that would also be registered on title, just to ensure that uh, we could maintain those that that maintenance program and the trees would would remain. So the application, or the lands are located in a in a special business park area that's specific to the brick wetlands ponds. And it's just basically to ensure that uh, any development in that area is um, has the brick wetlands in is considered and uh, and the development is sensitive. So in this case, we are supportive of the proposal based on the fact that it's a small-scale truck terminal. It also, there's also a significant amount of buffer between the the wetlands um, and the development. The environmental impact study was satisfied that uh, the development could go forward and that it would not have a negative impact with any of the natural vegetation, subject to a number of items such as um permanent fencing being located along the the edge of the development to ensure that that the development didn't creep over the years back into uh, the wetland or anything like that. Um, as well as, I think councillor Talbot also asked about this, a spill response plan. Um, and then there also would be a sediment erosion control plan. Um, and based on that, the environment impact study indicated that it was uh, it didn't feel that there would be any negative impacts on the uh, on the natural areas in in the um in this Parkinson Road area. Uh, with respect to our recommendation for the redesignation, we actually are recommending that the business park designation remain as opposed to redesignating to a traditional industrial designation, and that's just specifically so that we can ensure that the designation, or sorry, that the development remains small in scale and that it it not exceed the sixteen transport trucks that are being proposed today. As well as we wanted to continue to to tie the uh, brick pond wetlands um uh, restrictions to the property so that uh, we can maintain those natural features. Uh, with respect to the zoning, staff are satisfied also that uh the site-specific zoning can be applied to this development, and and we would also propose that it be capped at the at the sixteen trucks uh, for the site. And so in light of that, we'd recommend that this application be approved in principle, the zoning be approved in principle, and that the official plan amendment be given favorable consideration.
Thank you. Questions of council? Councillor Lauder?
Thank you. Um, through the mayor to Miss Hasler, uh, we did have one letter from of the Heidmans. Um, have you spoken to them about their concerns regarding the um, degrading and and um, the runoff onto their property?
Through the the mayor to councillor Ladder, Lauder, sorry, we did speak with them, and they did seem satisfied that uh after speaking with them, they they felt that they didn't have concerns uh, regarding grading or drainage.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions of council? Councillor Schadenberg?
Uh, first of all, councillor Lauder did steal one of my questions. My second question, however, was is is the fact that if we create the the fact a environmentally protected area behind that, does the homeowner after or building business owner have to leave any kind of access or easement to gain access to that property? If somebody ever has to get into the brick pond wetlands from that direction to do whatever work might need to be done environmentally?
Uh, through the mayor to councillor Schadenberg's question, as far as I know, um, and maybe Mister Connors has a a different perspective, but as far as I know, uh, access wouldn't be required to um, to this feature. Um, access to the brick wetlands can be can be facilitated from other areas that the city parks department would have access to as well as upper town. So I don't think that that's necessary, but um, we can definitely visit that through uh, the site plan approval process.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries. Thank you. And our next application is for two hundred Boot Hill for Leonard Reeves' removal of the holding provision. Uh, councillor Tate?
I'll move that Woodstock City Council prove the zone change application submitted by Leonard Reeves, whereby the lands described as block seventeen, Plan forty-one M dash two six two state Woodstock are to be rezoned from residential zone one, holding R one dash H to residential zone one, R one, to prevent the development of a single detached dwelling. And further, that any comments uh, received from the public were reviewed and considered before the decision was made in And further that any comments uh, received from the public were reviewed and considered before the decision was made in relation to this planning matter.
Thank you. And the seconder? Counselor Lotter? And uh, Ms. Hasler, welcome back.
Thank you. So this application is for the removal of a holding provision and the applicant is simply requesting the removal of this provision as previously, um, the intent was that there'd be a turning circle on this property. And the intent at, at one point in time that would, would be that Sparky's Lane would continue into uh, southwest Oxford lands. Since then, it's been determined that that likely will not happen and residential development will not occur outside of, of this area. Um, and so the applicant is requesting to remove the holding provision so they can go ahead and develop this, this parcel at the uh, at the end of Sparky's Lane. Um, and they would just put a single detached dwelling on it. Uh, the Public Works, City Public Works Department is satisfied with, with uh, the removal of the holding provision and feels that the turning circle is not necessary. I'm not sure in any mean, um, perhaps Taylor could speak to it further, but I'm not sure that uh, Public Works has actually even used uh, this parcel for a turning circle in quite some time if they ever used it. Um, but they feel that they can get into the area for snow removal as well as garbage uh, pickup uh, without needing a turning circle there. And, and therefore in light of that, we feel that the site can be um, the holding provision can, provision can be removed and that a development can take place on that property.
Thank you. Questions of council? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries. And let's see, our last planning item, we have Delash Properties Limited, two oh one Baysham Park Drive. Application for zone change. Looking for a mover? Counselor Lotter?
Thank you. I'll move that Woodstock City Council approved the zone change application file number Zed and eight dash twenty dash twenty-eight submitted by Delash Properties Limited for lands um, described as part lot four, Plan M seventy-three designated as parts one and two. Forty-one R seventy-six oh seven in the city of Woodstock whereby the lands are to, uh, to be proposed zone um, for, from special general industrial zone M three dash two to special general industrial zone M three dash thirty-five to permit parking in the rear yard for a maximum of ten transport trucks. And further that any comments received from the public were reviewed and considered before the decision was made in relation to this planning matter.
Thank you. And a seconder? We'll go Counselor Tate and Ms. Hasler, welcome back.
Thank you. So for the last application today, it's an application for a zone change and the applicant is proposing to amend the M three zone, which is the, the um, general industrial zone uh, to permit a truck terminal on the subject property. Um, and the lands are located at two oh one Baysham. These lands are subject to site specific policies, the Baysham Park Industrial um, industrial subdivision, um, which the city owns or has owned in the past. And um, so this parcel specifically was given site plan approval back in twen- March twenty twenty and the applicant has since constructed a two unit industrial building. Um, the one unit is being occupied by a building, a retail building, a supply establishment. And the other unit is intended for warehousing. Um, the future owner is proposing to uh, use the warehousing portion of the industrial building. And then they are proposing to park ten trucks in the rear yard uh, behind uh, the existing building. The intent for the, the parking area is for short-term parking for trucks between deliveries. And uh, and like I said, it would be capped at um, at a maximum of ten parking spaces for trucks. Um, the, just to, to give you an idea, the lands are designated traditional industrial, but they have the site specific policies, which generally impose more light industrial type uses. That being said, in the Baysham Park uh, industrial subdivision, there are a number of M three permitted or M three zones, which permit the whole range of traditional industrial uses. Um, in this specific, on this specific site, it says owned M three dash two, and so truck terminals are, are not permitted currently. Um, however, there's a, a number of different uses permitted in this, in this business park um, that would allow for a significant amount of truck parking. And so in this case, because they're only proposing the ten parking spaces and we have the bit, the ability to, to cap it. Um, staffers satisfied that uh, the proposal would be um, suitable for the, for the area in that um, other uses are similar and, and therefore be compatible as well. Um, so in light of uh, in our review, we feel that uh, the parking area for the ten trucks can be, can be permitted. However, we did not recommend that the full truck terminal use be permitted. We just uh, are proposing that it be considered, it be called um, like a site specific zoning be imposed. And then it be considered a truck parking area for a maximum of ten parking spaces. And so in light of that, that our recommendation um, is slightly different than the applicant's. Uh, we feel that it's achieving what the applicant is requesting to. And so we are supportive of the application.
Thank you. Questions of council? Counselor Talbot?
Thank you, worship through to Andrea. Something I didn't think about at the planning meeting the other night. Who polices the, the fact of how many trucks are actually parked there?
Through the mayor to Counselor Talbot's question, that'd be a by law enforcement issue. And so um, generally, um, if the by law enforcement were in the area and they noticed that there were more trucks than, than what was permitted, um, then they could go in and, and uh, request the, the owner to remove some of the trucks. Or alternatively, we, or the building department would often get calls from neighboring property owners.
Uh, in the planning meeting, was it not established that most of these trucks would be parking there at night? Is that correct?
Through the mayor to Counselor Talbot's question, that's correct. It's, the idea, I believe, is that um, is that the trucks are, are there overnight and then they leave for their deliveries in the morning.
Right, because most of their drivers are based out of Woodstock, even though they drive to Toronto, but they come back here and it makes more sense.
That's correct.
Thank you. Further questions of council? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries. Uh, so next up on our agenda, we have consideration of correspondence. Uh, first one, resolution from the city of Sarnia on color code capacity limits. Counselor Schattenberg?
Yeah, the Woodstock City Council supports the correspondence from the city of Sarnia advocating for adjustments to the color coded capacity limits. And for this resolution be circulated to the city of Sarnia, the Honorable Doug Ford, Premier of Ontario, the Honorable Dave McKenzie, Oxford MP, and the Honorable Ernie Hardeman, Oxford MP.
Thank you. And a seconder? Counselor Accioni, discussion? Counselor Schattenberg?
Just so people know, this is related to the COVID nineteen and, and the Board of Health and, and we all know that every Board of Health, there's thirty-four of them in the province of Ontario of all their different guidelines and different color codes and stuff, the processes as they're, as they're going through. And we hope that this uh, COVID nineteen pandemic and sooner rather than later. The odd thing I find, for example, is that there'd be um, and maybe give them credit to the, for example, to be a place of worship that is built, that, that is gigantic in size. And, and certain times you might only be allowed to put fifty people in there for, for a Sunday morning service. And to me, that seems to be a, a wrong number when I think, I think, I'll use this and I'll say it out loud. We're all adults here to sort of say, well, if you're going to permit a hundred and twenty people in there or say five hundred people by an AGCO recommendation for a, for a wedding, that maybe some sort of a percentage of that should be, be allowed to amount. So maybe it becomes eighty or a hundred. But sometimes we see these gigantic buildings that are only allowed uh, fifty people or minor hockey or girls hockey and figure skating has troubles getting registrations going when all of a sudden they say, well, at this point in time, you're allowed ten people in that gigantic recreation facility. Well, including a coach, it doesn't take long to, to get the ten or twelve people, that's for sure. So that's why I was uh, gonna, gonna agree to this. It, it just seems to be a little bit more uh, ability for, for the people who are running programs and what, that doesn't matter what the program happens to be, to be able to sort of set their own guidelines and maybe use the AGCO uh, guideline for what they're permitted for, for um, for liquor license, for example, maybe chop that by one-third or something like that and use that as a guideline. Not sure what kind of a guideline we'd use, but uh, this current system, I don't think is, is a little bit too straining.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And opposed? And carries. Thank you. Uh, next one for correspondence is on the cannabis licensing and enforcement. A resolution from the township of Brock. Uh, Counselor Schattenberg?
The, the Woodstock City Council supports resolution number twenty-two dash two received from the township of Brock regarding cannabis licensing and enforcement. And further that this resolution be circulated to the township of Brock and the Honorable Patty Hadrew, the Minister of Health for Canada, the Honorable Dave McKenzie, Oxford MP, and the Honorable Ernie Hardeman, Oxford MPP.
Thank you. And a seconder? Counselor Lotter, discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries. And let's see, so we'll go right along here, administrative services. And we have the twenty twenty expense and remuneration report as information. Counselor Tate?
Uh, we see the report as information.
Thank you. And the seconder? Counselor Talbot, discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries. And next up, we have the public transit funding phase two under the safe restart agreement. Uh, Counselor Accioni?
Thank you. Move by myself, the Woodstock City Council authorized a mayor and clerk to sign the safe restart agreement, public transit funding stream, phase two transfer payment agreement, and that the necessary bylaw be read.
Thank you. And a seconder? We'll go Counselor Schattenberg, discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries. And now we have the budget approval. And we have quite a few motions and potential motions to go through. Um, so we'll take them one at a time and uh, we'll start with Counselor Tate.
Okay, I'm going to uh, move the motions one, two, seven, and then nine, if you want me to read them out, if I can get a.
Was that one through seven or one, two, seven and nine?
Yeah, sorry. Oh, one through till se- to seven.
Okay.
Um, skipping eight and then number nine.
Okay. And a seconder on that? Counselor Accioni, discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And approved. So that's one through seven, excluding number eight and going with number nine on the public works. Okay. Uh, next up? And we don't have to go in any particular order. And Counselor Lotter?
Thank you. I'll move um, option number one, adding a seventh route and new routing. Move that would stop council approves adding a seventh route and a new routing for the six current routes on a thirty minutes cycle at an estimated cost of a hundred and forty thousand for five months to be financed from the provincial dedicated cast gas tax reserve fund. And further that the twenty twenty-one capital budget be amended to include the hundred, one hundred and twenty-five thousand in capital costs associated with this option to be financed from the provincial dedicated gas tax reserve fund.
Thank you. And a seconder on that one? Uh, Counselor Schattenberg, discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries. And uh, Counselor Talbot?
Thank you, worship. I'm going back to number eight and I am going to move that council proves hiring and contact temporary full-time business advisor for twenty twenty-one only at a cost of thirty-two thousand to be financed from the COVID nineteen grant.
Now, do you want the full amount? Do you want the, the, the twenty-five thousand five hundred from the city levy as well? Or do you just want a partial amount on? Uh, oh, is that the second or third? Just a second. Here we are. Uh,
That was the motion that's put on there. So I'm, it should be all financed from the COVID nineteen.
So the third one, the council proves hiring, contact temporary, full-time advisor for twenty twenty-one, that thirty-two thousand from the COVID nineteen grant.
That's correct, yeah.
All right. And a seconder on that one? Counselor Accioni, discussion? Counselor Talbot?
Thank you, worship. Just in um, listening to the presentation that was given to us, even though COVID nineteen has affected a lot of businesses, it's definitely um, has not slowed their business down. So I thought, given the opportunity, um, gain them to hire someone and then we can reevaluate it at the um, well, the next year's budget to see if it's something that needs to be continued on, but um, at least give them the help that they need for this year.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor Tate?
Yeah, just through your worship, I'm not going to be supporting this motion. Um, I looked at what the budget is already for that um, for the Small Business Center, it's quite high, so it's quite concerning. And um, just heard today that Ottawa is, city of Ottawa now is getting shut down again, if your rumors London is. So I'm just thinking, uh, twenty twenty-one, I think we're going to need all the money we can get right now. And to me, it's not, um, I don't think it's needed.
Thank you. Further discussion? All right. Seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? And we got two and opposed. And we got four, so that one's defeated. Uh, okay. So we could move on to the downtown or some of the miscellaneous. Who would like to go next? Counselor Tate?
Um, I will move motion uh, twelve through to sixteen.
Thank you. And let's see, do we have a seconder on that one? Counselor Accioni? Okay, discussion? Okay, seeing none, you've heard the motion. All those in favor? Or is that a question or a vote? Counselor Schattenberg?
It's just a quick question, only because number fifteen, uh, your worship says that the request from the Southgate Center for an annual inflationatory adjustment equivalent for the ninety-five thousand dollar portion to the grant to be approved. Is that the CIP, the Interstate CIP from year in, year out, that would be um, increased from, from their, for their budget contribution?
Or C, CPI, yeah, the, the, using the inflation index that our, our Treasury Department utilizes.
Okay, just wanted to, to clarify that. Sorry, yes.
Great. Any further discussion? Okay, so this is items twelve through sixteen. You've heard the motion. All those in favor? And carries. And? And who would like to go next? You have some motions. Uh, let's see, Counselate?
I'll move the motion seventeen and eighteen.
Okay. And looking for a seconder on that one? Counselor Lotter, discussion? Okay. And you've heard the motion. All those in fa- oh, is that discussion? Counsel Accioni? Yep, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I didn't mean to wave so much, sir. Uh, I, I've got a, I got a problem with um, Thank you, your worship, I didn't mean to wave so much, sir, uh, I've I've got a, I got a problem with um, numbers. And I guess I just wanted to share that I I've been riding the bus, uh, I meet with somebody every month and we've been going on bus rides as we can. And really been talking to a lot of uh, people that have been riding the bus. And rely on the buses and everything else, and I know i- it's a twenty-five cent increase. I I but I I feel terrible not mentioning it, that I think. No increases for the people that are riding these buses right now have been hit the hardest. Um, by COVID, a lot of their jobs have um, been affected and I am not going to. I'm not in favor of the increase of number of seventeen, the twenty-five cent increase, no matter how small it seems. I think in the grand scheme of things, we subsidize a bus so much that uh, the drop of the bucket, it it it. It it affects people in a real way that that need the money and I just feel better saying it, thank you.
Thank you, further discussion, councillor Schadenberg?
Yeah, your worship of America, this is a point of order, I just wanted to see if we could ask a question to our engineer Harold DeHaan to sort of. Get a get a guest to make, cause I I agree with Jerry about the twenty-five cents, but my flip side of that is the fact that that the monthly. Uh, pass is sixty dollars for a month, so it doesn't take you very long to accumulate sixty dollars, so. As far as the usage goes, especially if you use uh, the bus. Twice a day for twenty days, that's forty uses right there, you've more than made up your money, so I'm. Would like to see the two dollars fifty cent fare stay the same, but maybe increase the monthly cost, but. I guess the reason I want to ask Carol DeHaan a question, just to maybe give us a brief, brief, brief answers to how much insurance has gone up. Uh, fuel has gone up and maybe even wages have gone up since we've made the fare two dollars and fifty cents, which I understand was about six years ago.
Your worship, through the councillor, uh, the councillor's correct, the the way, uh, the fare was adjusted five or six years ago. Um, and since that time, uh, you know, there have been cost of living increases um, in terms of wages for for the drivers. Um, insurance, uh, we took a hefty hit again this year in terms of insurance on the vehicles on transit, it was, uh, I think it was the hardest hit department. In terms of insurance increases of all the city departments. You know, and and fuel has gone up in the last, you know, um, five, five years or so. Um, this increase that's being proposed today is in line with um, the plan that was was shown and adopted by council. Um, five or six years ago, when the last increase went in and it showed that at that time we were, actually, our fares were less than comparable. Min- uh municipalities, um, and that um, we were kind of putting a plan in place to try to get caught up with comparable. Uh municipalities and then um, and then go from there. Um, that being said, you know, councillor Accioni is correct that um, you know, um, transit is subsidized even at two fifty a ride. You know, the 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 city taxpayer does pay uh, a a portion of 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 the um, of the department, transit department. Um, however, you know, it looking at citywide, or are there are other services provided by the city that have no fee connected to to them at all, so. Um, I hope that that provides some answer to the councillor's question.
Thank you, further discussion? Councillor Schadenberg?
Maybe it's a friendly amendment or not, but I would certainly like to see some sort of an amendment or an agreement in there that uh. On not only the the fare of being two dollars and fifty cents or two dollars and seventy-five cents per fare, but if if. Uh, there's any recommendation whatsoever for the monthly uh, pass for adults, students and seniors, et cetera. Um, included in that uh, motion, because it's, there's nowhere in that motion, doesn't say that, hey, okay, we'll keep it at two fifty a month or two seventy-five a month. Or per fare, but we want to increase the monthly pass from say sixty dollars to seventy dollars. For those who use the uh, bus on a regular occasion, for especially if we're going to work.
So I think um, within the first part of the motion, so twenty-five cent increase. On the fare corresponding with the the new seventh route. And then at that second part, the corresponding increases for other methods of payment be approved, so. That would do the the small increase on the passes and the seniors, um. There as well, so I'm not sure if we need additional. Changes to the motion, um. So maybe, maybe what we could do, we could ask the city engineer to come back on and just clarify what would happen with the the other. Uh, payment methods if we approve this as presented, thank you.
Your worship, thank you, uh, yes, if if the increase is is proposed, uh, the twenty-five cents is basically a ten percent increase for the cash fare, so it would go from two fifty to. Two seventy-five, and as the motion says, um, a corresponding increase with the other payments, so the sixty dollar. A monthly pass for adults would go up ten percent, just like the cash fare, so it would then be sixty-six dollars. Um, and then, you know, similar to all the other passes, attempt basically a ten percent increase on all of them.
Thank you, does that help clarify things for everybody? Okay, further discussion? Seeing, oh, go ahead councillor Tate?
Okay, since I made the motion, um, I'm gonna withdraw number seventeen and just go with eighteen.
Yeah. And how's that with our seconder?
Yes.
Councillor Lauder, you're okay with that, so seventeen is withdrawn, so eighteen amending the paratransit. Policy uh, effective April first and uh, reducing the revenue line there. All right, discussion? Okay, seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries, now. That's eighteen, so this was there. Now, does anybody want to move seventeen before we move on, or? We'll leave that one for now, uh, councillor Lauder?
Thank you, I'll move that a twenty-five cent increase for the transit and paratransit cash fare to correspond with the introduction of the seventh route. Approximately uh, August the twenty twenty-one and corresponding increase for other methods of payment be approved and further that the. Levy for transit and paratransit be reduced by the estimated fifteen thousand dollar additional revenue.
Thank you, and a seconder on that one? We may not have a seconder.
Okay.
All right, uh, we'll keep moving along and we've got some uh. Motions received from members of council, we could start with you, uh, councillor Lauder?
Thank you, um, I I'll do these separately because everyone has a choice whether they want to, um. Uh, go ahead with this or not, accept them, so I'll do them individually. Uh, move by myself that the accessibility committee conference budget account twelve zero one dash seven one two six five dash oh three one eight. Be reduced from forty-five hundred to twenty-five hundred.
Thank you, and seconded by councillor Accioni, discussion?
The reason I put this one forward is um, uh, in pretty well everywhere in our budgets. All our conferences were reduced um, somewhat, and I just thought that with this year and uh. The way this COVID is, I don't think that um, anyone will be going too far as far and so next year they can go back if. If things change and I put it back up to that amount, but this year I didn't think we needed it.
Thank you, further discussion? Seeing none, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries, and we'll let you continue on councillor Lauder?
Move by myself that the Woodstock Environmental Advising Committee Public Education Budget Account twelve oh one dash eight. Eight oh four two three dash oh three two three be reduced from five thousand to two thousand.
Thank you, and seconded by councillor Accioni, discussion?
Again, again, I just um, feel the same about this that um, with COVID, so.
Thank you, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries, and we've got one more there, go ahead.
Move by myself that Woodstock Environmental Advisory Committee Advertising Budget twelve oh one. Dash eight oh four two three dash oh three one five be reduced from five thousand to four thousand.
Thank you, and a seconder? We'll go councillor Tate, discussion? Same rationale as the last two, uh, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries, now, any, any other motions we want to entertain before we uh. Go with the omnibus final approval of the budget? Councillor Accioni?
Actually, if I can, um, just a question to uh, Mr. DeHaan, with the seventh route, um. When the seventh route starts and everything else. Again, I hate having to redo signage and everything else, obviously, I'm not in favor of any rate increases, but I also don't want to see the expense of us going out. And putting all new signs out and having to turn around and, you know, put new signs on just for a price increase, whatever it comes in the future. When, when we make the seventh route and signage, can we just make sure, assuming it goes this way? That uh, we can add somewhere with a sticky uh, a price increase, so we don't have to go and reprint. All new signage or something like that, if we do, does that make sense at all?
Your worship, through the council, the signs right now don't have the feet, the fair on them for that reason, that we don't want to have to go through the hassle of. Changing the signs every time the fair has changed.
Okay, perfect, then, okay, thank you. So I'm not gonna make any more motions, no.
Okay, thank you, uh, anything else? All right, who would like the uh, to make the final motion? We'll go councillor Lauder, seconded by councillor Accioni, okay?
Yeah, sorry.
I'll move that Woodstock City Council approved the twenty twenty-one revenue fund budget as amended and that the Director of Administrative Services be. Directed to prepare the necessary bylaws for council's consideration.
Thank you, discussion? Councillor Accioni?
Uh, yes, I'm just wondering, uh, did I miss it, did we skip over number eleven?
Yes, we did, we skipped over number eleven.
Well, I'd like to make a motion then, to put that forward.
Okay, which, go ahead, which, which one would you like to put forward, go ahead?
I would like to move that council approved the eighty thousand funding requests received from CMHA to implement a peer outreach program as outlined in the budget. Preamble for a minimum of fifty to fifty-five hours per week.
Thank you, and a seconder on that one? Councillor Schadenberg, discussion? Councillor Accioni?
Yes, I think um, this is quite important, I think everybody can realize what's going around in the city, the. The the funding required to assist those, um. Not just homeless, but just in general around our downtown and other areas of the city where they might be involved, so. Uh, I think this is important to make sure we have added.
Uh, councillor Tate?
Yeah, I'm not going to be supporting this motion, um, we have a large number of um, agencies. Already working towards this and we need to get them all working together, I think throwing money at, it's not working. I just had another complaint today, so um, I think these agencies that we already have, they've got to use the money we've had. And uh, get working on this together.
Thank you, councillor Schadenberg?
I'm fine at this point with uh, for a comment, I just wanted to uh, maybe stipulate the fact that even when the police chief had his report on, you know, budget for the. For the police department, he talked lots about the the city Woodstock and what's going on downtown and in general, the KMA, the Health Association, other. Uh, things that are certainly concerns for for citizens of the city Woodstock and things we could do to assess.
Thank you, councillor Talbot?
Um, thank you, worship, I just wanted to say I support what councillor Tate said, um, we do have a lot of agencies and I agree that. Um, it would be better served if they all worked together, um. Frac- having a fractured uh, uh, approach is not obviously working and um, I know that we talked about it during the budget session. United Way, our police department, we, the city is involved, um, the agencies are involved. Uh, um, we do have a problem, but if we all, if everybody worked together, not just the city doing something on their own, but all the other agencies as well. We would be stronger and um, hopefully, I don't know if we're ever gonna be able to uh, totally get rid of the problem, but maybe we could make it. Um, not as bad as it is.
Thank you, further discussion, councillor Tate?
Yeah, just one last comment through your worship, this, and this is a county responsibility, so um, it is not a city responsibility, I know it's. Affecting our downtown, but we're spending a lot of money at the county on this already.
Thank you for that reminder, and uh, okay, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? Or now you're, okay.
Sorry.
We'll do that one more time, I think I, okay, all those in favor? And opposed? And motions defeated, and uh, thank you. Now, are there any other motions we'd like to entertain before we go to that final approval? Okay, we'll go back, uh, so councillor Lauder and seconded by councillor Accioni, go ahead, uh, we'll redo it one more time, councillor Lauder?
Thank you, I move by myself that 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 Woodstock City Council approved the twenty twenty-one revenue fund budget as amended. And that the Director of Administrative Services be directed to prepare the necessary bylaws for council's consideration.
Thank you, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And approved, very good, we have a uh, final approval for the twenty twenty-one budget and. Treasury will be working very hard on the calculations, now we're, we're still at a point where we don't have the finalized uh. Tax ratios back yet through uh, approval at the county, but uh, in the coming days, we'll have some good information out. For the ratepayers in Woodstock to let them know uh, what they can anticipate this approved budget will do this year. Uh, moving right along, we'll go to our engineering department, we have an amendment to the municipal code chapters four sixty-six and four ninety-nine. Looking for a mover there, we'll go councillor Tate?
I'll make the motion to refer to bylaws.
And thank you, and a seconder? Councillor Schadenberg, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries, and so that's it, we will move right along to the bylaws, councillor Accioni?
Just move by myself, seconded by councillor Lauder, uh, the following bylaws begin in a first and second reading. Nine four four, sorry, nine four four zero dash two one. Um, so I have to read, I think I do have to read them all. Uh, a bylaw to authorize ex- execution of the transfer payment agreement for the safe restart public transit funding stream phase two. Nine four four one dash two zero, a bylaw to amend municipal code chapter four six six. Fire routes designation, nine four four two dash two one. A bylaw to amend municipal code chapter four nine nine parking accessible, accessible. Number nine four four three dash two one, a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw number eight six two six dash ten as amended. Z N eight dash twenty dash twenty-eight, Bysham Park Drive. Number nine four 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 dash two one, a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw number eight six two six dash ten as amended. Z N eight dash twenty dash seventeen, Parkinson Road. Number nine four four five dash two one, a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw number eight six two six dash ten as amended. Z N eight dash twenty dash twenty-seven, Southwood Way. Nine four four six dash two one, a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw number eight six two six. Dash ten as amended, Zen and eight twenty dash twenty-nine Boot Hill. And nine four four seven dash twenty-one, a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw number eight six two six. Dash ten as amended, Z N eight dash twenty dash oh three, Oxford and Drew.
Thank you, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries, and now you get to do the abbreviated version.
Thank you, worship, move by myself, seconded by councillor Lauder, that the following bylaws be given a third and final reading. Uh, nine four four zero dash two one. Nine four four zero dash two one, two nine four four seven dash two one, thank you, inclusive.
Thank you, you've heard the motion, all those in favor? And carries, and for questions and addresses, we will start with Counselor Schattenberg?
Thanks, I just wanted to point out that Thursday mornings is always my garbage day in my neighborhood, so it was garbage morning today, and because it was a nice warm sunny day, and all the piles of snow are gone, I kind of drove around the neighborhood a little bit on my way to Aaron, I had to run today, and I noticed that everyone's got their garbage bag at the end of their driveways, just a reminder, the city of Woodstock has a volunteer program now where it's suggested that's a nice volunteer suggestion that you share with your neighbors, especially when there's no piles of snow in your front yard, and to be able to share a driveway, so I shared my driveway with my neighbor, and carried my bag over to my neighbor's house and put it in his driveway this morning, it would sound like an odd funny thing to do, but I just think the the trucks can stop less often and maybe save some fuel and maybe save us some time per driver too, as well as maybe being able to subside every third house, especially when it's just a garbage pickup. Recycling, I could see, might be a little bit more difficult, especially if you've got five or six bins, and your neighbor's got his five or six bins out, but I I think the garbage drop offs to be sharing driveways is a good idea, so I wanted to remind people about the friendly volunteer bylaw we passed in the city of Woodstock.
Thank you, Counselor Acioli?
Thank you, your worship, just want to keep everybody, remind people, there are some new outbreaks going around, just be safe here in town, I don't think we're too bad, but Ottawa, of course, announced, I hear London's got a little bit as well, so just be safe, wash your hands, wear a mask. I still strongly encourage you to shop local, get downtown, get out, my daughter actually took me out, and I enjoyed a pedicure downtown, she took me out for lunch, then we went out for dinner, so still encourage you to shop local as much as you can, they need our support now more than ever, keep them going, but just just do it smartly. Again, wearing the mask can sanitize your hands, and just always keep your copy of the What's on Woodstock Magazine handy, it's a great guide for what's going around and all the latest, so, thanks, everybody, be safe.
Thank you, Counselor Lauder?
Thank you, just to remind the students that are graduating, that application forms are available, it's the Friends of the Art Gallery Legacy Scholarship, and they're for graduating high school students in Oxford County, and the winner will be awarded a thousand dollars towards post-secondary education in the arts, and the deadline is May the sixth to midnight to get your application in, so thousand dollars is nice to get when you're getting ready to go off to university or college. And just to mark, Counselor Schattenberg, that's what happened to my husband when he was putting his garbage out on our neighbors, and he ended up with a cast on, so but I'm still doing it, so, and I think it's a great idea, and he agreed with it too, but right now he's not agreeing with it, so, thank you.
And just as a public service announcement, the cast has nothing to do with whether or not a bag tag was placed on the garbage. Counselor Talbot?
Thank you, worship, I just wanted to express my condolences to the family of Ross, Jerry. I had the privilege of sitting with Ross on council, in fact, being his best mate. I was called today by the press to just make some comments, and I guess my fondest memory of Ross is he used to bring wine gums to every meeting for himself, and then I would probably steal most of them, so he started bringing me my own wine gums every meeting, so Ross was the type of guy, he was very devoted, he cared very deeply for his community, he worked very hard. But he was also the guy that you could agree to disagree, and you carry on, there was never any animosity if he didn't agree with your decision or anything, so he's going to be terribly missed in the community, I mean, he was such a a force with the union, and he was, he knew so many people, so it's very sad, but again, I'm just grateful that I had the privilege of sitting with him and working alongside him for the betterment of our community, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Tate?
Yeah, I also just want to use my comments for Ross, Counselor Lauder, Talbot, and I both sat with him on council, he was an amazing counselor, and as Counselor Talbot said, you could disagree, but he was very professional, never, you know, just left it there, he's also, he did his homework, talked to staff, he never talked a lot, but when he talked, it was important what he said. It is amazing the number of people that he touched in this community, I can't tell you the number of people that would send me updates, people I didn't even know that knew him, and I'd kind of laugh because I was keeping in contact with him when he was sick, and just a couple of comments, this is this is what Ross was like, so I dropped off a gift one day up at the hospital, and you have, right now, alls you can do is just go to the front desk, well, the nurses there, they're all smiles, they're like, oh, we know who Ross is, we'll go right up there. So I sent him, I sent him a text, and I said, you'll have to tell Tammy, I said, all the nurses think you're the greatest patient up there, you got to kick out of that, but what he sent back to me after he went through a terrible ordeal and a lot of pain, and what he wanted me to know was the staff up there was amazing. Been saying, you know, he wasn't complaining what he was going through, he just wanted it, wanted me to know that the staff at the hospital, the care and everything else, so my condolences to Tammy and the rest of his family, he'll be sorely missed in this community, it is it is amazing the number of people that he touched.
Thank you, and thank you for your fond memories, counselors regarding Ross, and he'll be yeah, he'll be missed, the flag is flying at half mast at City Hall, and of course he's going to be missed at the library, the contributions he was making there with this term of council. And here we are, we're in a blessed community where you can think of individuals just like him who going about their day-to-day business in in all that they do, they touch so many other people's lives, and their their impact will be felt for generations to come. With that, I would like a motion to adjourn, and we'll go with Counselor Acioli and a second. Counselor Talbot, all those in favor? And we are adjourned, thank you.